It could, might not, just being a use may not impact. But then, the planning department has to take these sixty spot little home parks, that's going to impact traffic. And they got to look at it, sixty spots, that's probably two vehicles per spot, that's seven hundred and twenty vehicles leaving in the morning, a hundred and twenty vehicles coming in at night. You guys are looking at use. So yours isn't as great as theirs, so don't start with your thing. So yes, don't get overwhelmed by that, you know. Right now, you're looking at, say, yeah, okay, we have, there are showing two entrances, so have them go that way, have them go that way, you know, depending on what side it is. Let the planning department tell them. Unless you guys are a little concerned about it, you can back and say, you know what, yeah, we like the use where we're pretty useful, we're approved of conditions. We think that, you know, it only goes thirty. That's our condition. And then that's come back to planning board, and the planning board is going to say, okay, you don't allow thirty because that's ZBAA seven. If you're strong on that part, you guys have, you have the right to do that. I'm just trying to tell you, we're looking at just the use of it.
About a minute to go. Get the meeting going, if you want to rise, we'll start it off. If anybody has any ears or phones, but we asked you to have them turned off so we don't get interrupted, and all the fire exits are marked and located, and can we have a roll call?
Senator Hale?
Yes.
Karen W.
Here.
Russell LaFleur, the justice, Roger Black?
Here.
Marion Aljandou, the president, Patrick DeHin?
Here.
Alexander Jorge, Arson, Lee Ronhop?
Here.
Alan Reed?
Here.
Drew Arthur?
Here.
Matthew Cappel?
Here.
And can we have a approval that the meeting was advertised as necessary?
So moved.
And roll call vote on that?
Senator Hale?
Yeah.
Karen W.
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Patrick DeHin?
And can we have a motion to approve the minutes last month's meeting?
Seconded.
Seconded. And roll call on that, we'll obtain.
Senator W.
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Patrick DeHin?
And Stephen with all business.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. With Oliver Mads found, and if anything is muffled and you need to hear it again, please don't hesitate to ask. First one's going to be twenty fifty-one M.J. Murphy LLC, I think represented by Mr. Renee, if you'd like to come up. They are asking for a use variance. This is in front of the planning department. They would have to obtain a use variance to be able to proceed any further. They're asking to expand a commercial business in an R-two district for self, self-storage units, which is not allowed use in an R-two district. We can go over the details first with Mr. Reed showing the parcel where it is, and finding the overviews and everything that was submitted to us first.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, some of you may remember this parcel right here on the South Junction Road. This is Route nine here, Champlin Lake down here, railroad tracks. So we're looking at this parcel right here. You can see this whole area is all zone R-two. This is the parcel we're looking at. So here it is. This building right here, this parking lane here, this is the entire parcel. This is the river coming through, Route nine, railroad tracks. Here's what it looks like today. These are some of the plans that were provided by the engineer. So I was going to quickly, this is that building you just saw right here, the driveway coming in. He's looking to put in four different storage units. I believe this is a phase project, so I think it's a tuna front and then tuna back, or something like that. This is a closer view so you can see the layout. There's another view of it. Hey, Mr. Renee, I turned it over to you.
First of all, nice seeing everybody tonight, under these circumstances and in masks, you know, it's kind of hard to recognize everybody to some extent. Seems to my right is Matt Murphy. He is the owner of this property and operator of M.J. Murphy LLC, which is a painting contractor. Matt owns this building. He's owned it for a while, originally with his other, with his partner, under All Action Painting. He now is the owner and operator of this property. He's owned it for a period of time. I believe Matt, and Steve can correct me, but they may have done the variance for the contracting office there. I'm not sure whether they did or they didn't originally. I know historically at that property, I know Chris Booth had a contracting office. Tommy, Karen, and/or his son had a small engine repair motorcycle shop there that I believe they got a variance for as well. And since Matt's owned this building, I believe he came back before this board, I'm going to say a couple of years ago maybe, and got a variance for detailing shop at the property.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, over the years, there's been a number of variances granted to this property predominantly for contracting office, small engine repair, different kinds of operations. Currently, Matt uses, uses this property as his office. From time to time, he may store like a trailer there, a lift there, et cetera. As you can see from pictures that were shown today, it's a pretty well-kept up property. It's been kept in good condition, kept in good repair. But his plan is, is initially to construct two self-storage units, which I would call the kind of the more outside wings, the ones closer to the building. I believe they each have ten units in each. Is that correct, Matt?
Yes.
So initially, that's what he's seeking. It is somewhat of a phase project, and then depending on how successful that end of it is, then he would propose to put the, the two buildings which would be further north on the property. They comply with all the setbacks that are required by the town as shown on the plan that was drawn by RMSPC. So the, the property is a good-sized piece of property. Certainly accommodates these uses, accommodates buffers. It's, it's certainly, it's wooded more to the north. A parcel to the west is wooded, a parcel to the east certainly appears to be pretty well-wooded as well from looking at some of the pictures we saw earlier. I know there's been some neighbors that have issues with what Matt is proposing here. We've done a lot of research into looking into self-storage units and the amount of traffic that's generally generated by those. I mean, initially, when they're constructed, Matt, and, and just what he says, Matt plans on doing most of the work himself and not all the work himself. So you're not going to see a lot of other contractors in there doing this. He's done a lot of research on, on the, what works and what doesn't work on self-storage units. From our experience, from what we've researched, I mean, the traffic flow is going to be fairly minimal. I mean, you're going to have people going in to drop stuff off. But quite frankly, you'd be lucky to probably see a couple of visits in any given week. Not probably the most of people either to come pick stuff up or drop stuff off. It's, it's not going to generate a lot of traffic, and it's certainly not going to generate a lot of noise. If you look around the, the town and even other towns with self-storage units, you know, they're, they're a pretty quiet operation, generally speaking. It's not going to generate a lot of noise and a lot of, a lot of traffic. So it's really, in our opinion, it's not really going to change at all, but certainly the character of the neighborhood. This has been a commercial building for a long period of time. There's other commercial operations in the vicinity of the property, in particular on the south side of the property, or on the south side of the road, I should say. The planning board noted in sketch plan, and just so the board realizes, we've, we've been in front of the planning board, they gave us preliminary sketch plan approval of the project. They noted, actually, the boat storage that, that is on the south side of South Junction Road, I guess more predominantly on New York State Route nine, but, but some of the boat storage stretches towards South Junction Road. And, and so from the planning board comments, it didn't seem to have a lot of real concern with, with the project or what, how it was being designed. So in our opinion, it's certainly not going to change the character of the neighborhood. You're not going to see a lot of traffic, you're not going to see any noise. You know, we, we addressed all the other concerns of the planning board. The property is certainly somewhat unique because of the number of variances approved for the project. It's been approved for a number of commercial uses. In particular, a number of commercial uses just for, for Matt, in particular, not only just the office and his operations there as a painting contractor, but also for the detailing side of it. Our position is, is it's not a self-created hardship. With, with regards to financial return, I would note that this property is located in the R-two zone, which predominantly only really favors and/or allows residential uses. This property really doesn't suit itself for any type of residential use. The building certainly is a commercial building. It's always been a commercial building. It was built as a commercial building. It doesn't allow it really to be subdivided in any way, shape, or form, where you can put roads in to develop the rear of it. So to say we could realize, realize a reasonable return for use that's allowed in the zone, that would really require us to realize a reasonable return for some type of residential use. And that's not what this, this property is, is situated for. And it's not certainly the way it was constructed. It's, it's a commercial building. It's well-kept, it's well-maintained, the yard certainly is well-maintained, and we would certainly make, you know, certainly contend that we'll maintain the property further as we build these self-storage units. Keep it in good repair. Again, Matt's, Matt is going to be right there, his office is going to be, we, we'd be right there to watch over any of the tenants or any of the people that are using it to make sure it's, it's kept up and kept in good condition. So it, it's certainly not cost-effective in any way, shape, or form to change this property or just the existing building to some type of residential building. It, essentially, the building would probably have to be demolished for a residence, some type of residential use, because it just, it just not suited for that purpose. So on that basis, we, we maintain, we certainly cannot realize a reasonable return for use that would be allowed in this particular zone. I think that's really all I really have to say. I, I know we've, we've been in front of this board, and Matt in particular has been in front of this board a couple of times in the past, if any variances granted. He's always complied with any conditions that have been set forth by the board and by, by the town offices. I don't think he's in violation of any type of conditions or anything that's been imposed. So we maintain this is a, really a, an extension of the use that's at the property. It's certainly a reasonable use, taking into account the, the traffic flow or the increase of, of any type of, I guess, infrastructure or uses of the property, and it seems to flow with what we need, let's say, currently. So we would maintain and request that the board consider this application. I believe the county planning board, we found that it was a local issue. Is that correct? So, so they, they, they basically put it back in front of the board to make a decision with respect to the application. And we're certainly willing to answer any questions that the board may have for us.
Do you want to read into the record?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman.
Now, or you want to go?
I'll, I'll go, I'll go through all these. We'll let the, the public open it and then maybe go through above. That works for you, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
So the, Mr. Chairman, this did go down to the county for, first, Mr. Renee, you're correct, there is no outstanding violation with him. Since Mr. Murphy has owned it, we haven't had any complaints. My opinion is one just of mine in the office, it's cleaned up. Since Mr. Karen and, I can't remember.
Chris Booth, maybe?
Yeah, since they're there, it was, you know, it was questionable of what was there, what was there, you know, outside storage. So since then, it's cleaned up, neat, nice, neat clean, as you can see in the pictures today. So you're correct in saying that. Now, to the long-drawn-out stuff that we have here. And we have five different letters from the public. Some people didn't feel, with COVID, with the issue, they wanted to write their statements to be read into the public for the appeal twenty fifty-one. That being said, the Clinton County Planning Board decision, the two thirty-nine M referral, was a local issue, but see comments. It said, "On the October eighth referral, fifty-six twenty, Town of Platsburg ZBAA applicant, J.M. Murphy, use variance for self-storage commercial units, forty, South Junction Road." The Clinton County Planning Board at its October seventh meeting voted eight to oh to consider this request a local issue, but provide the following comments to the town. "The applicant, as submitted, does not appear to meet the test for use variance." Glenn, Glenn Cutter. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I have, we're going to go down the line, so you just don't listen to me for the next twenty-five minutes. We're going to go in to, the first one was Martin Glenn. His, the local address here is forty-one oh seven Route nine, South, Platsburg, New York, but his mailing address was West, Eleventh Fairport Road, Westport, Connecticut. Fair with me on this one? Please do confirm receipt of this zoning board application on the matters here on reference will be read into the record. This violates all aspects of zoning, beginning the process of moving from light commercial use to moderate heavy commercial use in an R-two zone property. This in regard to appeal twenty fifty-one and request by M.J. Murphy LLC to expand its commercial operations and be afforded a variance to expand further uses of its facilities and property to include self-storage units on its own R-two residential district. My name is Martin Glenn. I own property adjacent to M.J. Murphy LLC. I would like to submit my strong dissent with the proposed addition of self, commercial self-storage units anywhere either inside or on quotations, on the property located at forty, South Junction Road. My argument is that this area is zone R-two residential district. This property has transferred hands several times. At each transfer of ownership, it has been my hope that the town would choose to enforce its own zoning. It has not. Instead, the town has obligated its responsibilities to the very codes it established to protect residential areas from encroachment from commercial businesses. Commercial properties being increased traffic, noise, people, residential areas to date, this has been a three-time failure by the town as the property has transferred ownerships three times to protect its constituents. This is nothing new to our neighborhood. There are multiple decisions that the town has not enforced its codes and granted variances when it should. To wit, Dr. Davis's garage too close to Route nine, Ed Goodrich's property garage too close to South Junction Road. Foundation was poured absent of permanent, Hodges' garage too close to Old Dock, and more likely additional. And for the property under discussion at the time the original variance was granted forth this property to Chris Booth, it was rumored to be on the town record that this property was to be converted back to R-two upon sale by Chris Booth to the next owner. Obviously, that never has happened, and here we are having discussions perhaps should have never been happened. The decision in the former variances slowly but surely undermined our neighborhood and made them less than they could be. Moreover, once these commercial entities are permitted in a residential district, they are more often there in perpetuity, perpetuity. The businesses grow, the commercial needs and demands of the property also increase, thereby eroding the very protection that R-two codes seek to provide. This has most definitely proven to be the case here, and therefore, the impact on residential neighborhoods increased over time and is a slow crawl, but a crawl nonetheless. And here we are facing exactly the same circumstances. Simply, and if M.J. Murphy requires heavier commercial use, there will be other areas within the town to suit, suit his needs. Finally, I question the appearance, the appearance of impropriety. In the pursuit of tax revenue outweighing the necessity of R-two residential districts, the associated codes obsolete. I for one believe, I for one don't believe this to be the case. I wonder where else the town has made tax revenue-driven decisions that are ultimately detrimental to the residential neighborhoods and the tax payers. So where does this end? When will the town enforce its very codes it put in place? I would ask the town to enforce its codes that they are there for a reason and not grant a variance requested. Look forward to hearing from you. All the best. Martin Glenn.
Act one. Now, now you've got next.
This is from Marcia Booth Murdoch. There we go. I'm a joint property owner on South Junction Road, specifically tax map ID two four six dash one dash thirteen point one, immediately adjacent to forty, South Junction Road. Tax map parcel two four six dash one dash one dot three dot two, on the west property line. I have concerns relative to the variance provision appeal debated by M.J. Murphy LLC. The present zoning variance application is seeking approval of self-storage units, which is not allowable or compatible use of the R-two zoning district. There is a very far cry from the spirit and intent of approved use at the original variance. I would request that you please review the history of the variance, the intent of the original variance, and the present condition of the property before considering any further change of status on this property. The original variance specifically stated, quote, "The granting of this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because the building will be residential in character and there will be one office and inside storage of material. There will be no outside storage of any kind," close quote. The no outside storage condition appears to only have been faithfully followed by the original owner and the owner of the variance, Booth Construction. The variance has evolved over time from residential-style office and contained construction equipment, storage that preserved the residential character of the land to manufacturing, building electric motors and motorcycles, to now industrial and commercial in nature. At present, there are trailers, ladders, quantities of large pet containers, and other equipment being stored outdoors at the property, including a boat and trailer. This argues for a site visit before the ZBAA takes any action on this appeal. The sweeping conversion of a single R-two property into an industrial site should not be allowed to continue. I am concerned that the discussions recorded with the sequential variances look like developing justification returning the area of R-two land into an industrial area on the basis of the use of this single property. Please refer to the current zoning map. There have been a number of misstatements and misunderstandings that have been carried through the original and subsequent variances that were amended relative to forty, South Junction, since the initial one was granted in nineteen ninety-eight to my father and my uncle. The second variance was granted to a subdivided portion of the adjourned-owned property, which was subsequently conveyed to Chris Booth, the owner of the original Booth Construction office and storage building in nineteen ninety-nine. While the U.S. government did confiscate a large part of the family property through an eminent domain action, the state's quote "no-fly zone" was a misunderstanding of the amendment of PAFP to periodically clear timber from the flight line. The statement about the land not being saleable may have, have been misconstrued because the family had not made any attempt to sell the land and did not intend to dispose of either parcel from the original that the Booth brothers ultimately divided. The two resulting parcels were kept within the family, and Booth Construction built the office and equipment building on the property under discussion for further variance amendment. Not until years later was there any attempt to market either parcel for sale. The conditions on the nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine variance at the time were: The building will be owner-occupied. Setbacks will be shown, will be as shown on the submitted plan. Any change to this request must come back before the ZBAA can review. There will be no exterior storage of materials on the property. Applicant will leave screening slash fullage on the property to block the view of the building by residential neighbors. There will be no evening slash nighttime operations on the site. One misconception stated at the time of the initial variance was that there is a quote "no-fly zone." There was not a no-fly zone. It is incorrectly characterized in the original nineteen ninety-eight variance. Aside from the fact that PAFP closed in nineteen ninety-five, the FAA presently has no such designation, and the fact only has recommendations for building heights under a flight line, which the FAA presently holds at two hundred and fifty feet. Additionally, it's not the Murphy property that is bordered by the D and H Railroad on the lesser boundary, but it is, it is our property, Booth, et cetera, that borders the railroad. That statement does not appear to even have any corrective in the record either. Whether the railroad bank make the property unattractive to residential uses up to the property owners to determine. To us, it has never been an intrusion. A number of other residences in the area are not far from the rail line. I personally live within twenty yards of a railroad track without discomfort from noise because the train merely passed by in a regular schedule, and the despoils from the diesel engines are well within OSHA standards and non-noise nuisances. On the other hand, at present, I live approximately a half mile from a shitty tree motorcycle shop, and the noise from the business is disruptive and intrusive and frequently nearly deafening when Harley's are worked on. The comparison between trains and motorcycles was made apparently by a board member in the past as justification for granting a two thousand and seven variance amendment. Further, frequent and regular uncontrolled traffic and noise, such as what would be expected of a storage unit facility operated twenty-four-seven immediately next to or across the road, would be considerably more disruptive and impactful. It would be wholly outside the residential in character used for the property that was allowed by the ninety-eight variance. For a next-door resident on our parcel or any of us using our own property recreationally with a setback of only twenty feet, a commercial storage facility would most certainly be very intrusive and disruptive to the keys and tranquility of our property. In two thousand and seven, the use of the property through the revised variance became a manufacturing site where electric motors were created and repaired and trade motorcycles were built. This converted a passive equipment storage building into a shop for industrial activity. It was no longer being geared by the ZBAA than often a storage building of residential character. At that time, your opinion was expressed that the building could not be converted to a residence. However, there is no justification in that opinion in the record. Having been associated with the building trades for decades, and having been involved in conversions of similar buildings to office and other uses, I question this conclusion and presently see no evidence to suggest the building could not be converted to a residence unless the industrial use has somehow contaminated the property, making it unsuitable for residential use. It was in the two thousand and sixteen variance that the original office and storage building started being referred to as a shop. This made it easy to prove a paint shop to be there. In this variance, it indicated that a tenant was allowed, contrary to the continued language that said the building will be owner-occupied. The tenant is not owner, so the conditions are actually contradictory. The conditions of the variance that were changed slash added are in red below. It should be noted that the potential tenant being referred to was a small business like a plumber who would share the office portion of the building with the owner. There was no discussion of adding buildings or renting storage. Two thousand and sixteen version of conditions. The building will be owner-occupied. The setbacks will be as shown on the submitted plan. Any change to this request must come back before the ZBAA can review. There will be no exterior storage of materials on the property. Applicant will leave screening slash fullage on the property to block the view of the building by residential neighbors. No thinning of fullage within twenty feet of the property line. There will be no evening slash nighttime operations on the site. Future tenant would comply with all conditions. In the two thousand and sixteen variance, there was no allowance for the enlargement of the parking area nor paving of that enlarged area. Yet, here when the variance was granted, aerial photos demonstrated that such a change was made. The conditions still state that there will be no exterior storage of materials. However, direct observation has verified that materials are being stored outdoors. Now the variance sought is to add commercial storage units that are not allowed in R-two zoning. R-two zoning allows a variety of housing types, including one and two-family homes, apartments, townhouses, as well as agricultural uses and other low-impact compatible uses. By the very nature of the storage unit business, the traffic will increase, and contrary to the two thousand and sixteen arguments that the paint business, the business would largely be conducted off-site and under locations and decrease onsite traffic, the entire storage business would by its very nature be occurring on this property on a daily basis. The setbacks are only twenty feet to the property line of our property. This twenty feet is already enclosed by the paint bucket storage outdoors next to our property. Because of past experiences, I, I have concerns that this storage operation would overrun our property, that drainage changes would cause damage to change the character of our property, that the risk of trespass will increase measurably, and noise and traffic impact will be considerable. The company lighting would be expected to cause nighttime light pollution and may adversely affect the wildlife we harbor on our property. Further, the change to a full-scale commercial operation adjacent to our R-two land will adversely affect our current use, our potential future use as a residential property, and any future opportunities we may have for sale of the property if we so choose. And therefore requesting that the ZBAA not only reject this variance request, but instead revert the variance back to its original approved use, or mitigate it, and allow the land to return to its original R-two use. It is clear with studying the surrounding land parcel maps that many of the surrounding properties are in fact residential properties, and the local zoning map shows the entire area as R-two zoning. This one property is the anomaly in the area, and it should not be allowed to expand and become a full-blown twenty-four-hour onsite commercial business of the proposed type. If allowed to become a storage facility, it will completely change the residential character of the neighborhood and considerably, considerably impact our adjacent property. This is contrary to the original statement made in granting the original variance, that the granting of this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because the building will be residential in character, and there will be one office and inside storage of material. There will be no outside storage of any kind. Thank you for considering this request to make a thorough review of the history of variances granted on forty, South Junction Road, and also to investigate the current condition of the property before considering changing this property to a fully commercial property in the midst of residence or other R-two uses. While we be, while, we will be the most directly impacted, several close neighbors, but also the other parts of the sub change, and all will also find impacts to our property values, R-two properties that are presently more attractive in zone rural residential areas near the lake and recreational areas. Marcia Booth Murdoch.
Okay, next letter is the co-owner, Marcia. This is Matthew Booth. He writes, "As a property owner on the South Junction Road, specifically tax map ID two forty-six point dash one dash thirteen point one, adjacent to the applicant property on the west property line, I have some concerns relative to the proposal being made by M.J. Murphy." I have some concerns relative to the proposal being made by M.J. Murphy LLC forty South Junction Road seeking a zoning variance amendment to include self-storage units which is not allowed use in the R2 district. Our family has owned this property for over a hundred years and currently our parcel is wooded and used by family members to enjoy the natural serene setting, walk dogs, and cut an occasional Christmas tree. While we do not currently have the plans to develop the property in any way, the potential to do so at some point cannot be discounted. The R2 classification of the property, I believe, truly reflects the current majority uses of the area. Advocate's property is the only commercial presence on the road for more than a mile. To allow the addition of storage units on this property will change the character of the neighborhood and add an unprecedented increase in traffic at all hours of the day and potentially at night. Most any storage facility that I am familiar with allow client access twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I think if allowed, this change in usage will adversely affect the current character of neighborhood and any potential future residential development in the immediate area. The natural character of the surrounding land causes seasonal runoff and collection of surface water. Any further alterations of the natural water course will impede the normal draining to this groundwater, creating an unwanted collection of water for longer periods of the year. This will create an unwanted problem where none currently exist. With the creation of a storage facility necessitating the inclusion of enlarged areas of parking, driving, and maneuvering space, results in stormwater collection and or runoff will cause additional drainage issues for adjoining properties. The required security of this type of facility oftentimes includes security fencing, controlled access gates, and nighttime security lighting, all of which will have a negative visual impact on this large residential neighborhood. For these reasons, my opinion is that the request for a variance amendment be denied. Matthew T. Booth, co-owner of Adjacent Properties."
All right, my letter is from Jeffrey Barker. This letter is to express my strongest objections to appeal number twenty fifty-one concerning M.J. Murphy LLC forty South Junction Road. Request to amend the previous variance for the following initial reasons. One, the bottom line is this application is that the subject area is prime residential and any business use such as is currently granted to or to include self-storage units, et cetera, would ruin the appeal in use of the adjacent properties by the residents. Two, I own two properties in the immediate area. One is known as number four South Junction Road. It is a twelve-acre two-house estate that has a common border of about seven hundred and fifty-six feet with Murphy's business. The area is open woods with trails and recreation. In the foreseeable future, a goal is to harvest timber and establish open fields to reestablish the historic former Sacks Family Farm. The variance would adversely affect the historic nature of the Sacks Estate and surrounding areas. This will thus expose the current and proposed variance buildings to the visibility of all families that lie along Route Nine. Thus, the variance would the variance would thus not be in the best interest of residents of Plattsburgh as a whole. It would be an eyesore and totally unacceptable. Number three, my understanding is that the original nineteen ninety-eight variance granted to a Mr. Chris Booth was specified to revert back to residential use at determination of said initial commercial use. This has not been complied with. A thorough review of this original variance is due. Number four, in May twenty sixteen, my contention is that Mr. Murphy expanded the pre-existing parking lot in violation to the terms of the March ninth, two thousand and sixteen. It was then paved over. Now my adjoining Sacks Estate property is very wet and unusable due to surface water runoff onto it and stagnation. This would not exist if the parking lot was not expanded in in May twenty sixteen, Plattsburgh Town Councilor, Mr. Martin Van Ex and I measured said parking lot area from my property line. It is within twenty feet of my survey property line and thin the foliage a violation of the variance. This is an open issue that I will bring forth in another format. Number five, certainly the town of Plattsburgh wants to increase tax base, but this application in its raw form is a self-created hardship. There is plenty of commercially zoned lands available in the town to permit piggyback variances for the expansion since it was originally granted opens a never-ending door that will ruin the area. Number six, the building in its current form as all-action painting on the current site should be financially sound and profitable. If not, the residents of the property owners and the property owner should not be forced to subsidize a bad business plan or operator with unwanted growth due to a variance. Number seven, the alleged hardship in the variance application is indeed unique since it never should have been granted. Hold the line and do not grant the variance. Number eight, the variance will indeed alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The variance should be denied. Number nine, the property immediately to the north is owned by Clinton County and is international airport property. Such airport land needs to be more secure with woods and residential properties and not ever expanding commercial use. Number ten, a few years ago, I had a conversation with Mr. Murphy over my objections to how he conducted himself. His reply to me was essentially, "Why should you, Mr. Barker, care since you don't even live here?" Reject the variance. Number eleven, this letter is submitted with the understanding that the July fourteenth, twenty twenty variance appeal is being delayed due to application timing problems. My right to amend and update this letter in a future hearing is preserved. Thank you for your consideration. To the above facts, Jeffrey Barker, forty seventy-nine, State Route Nine, Plattsburgh, Florida.
So now that being said, this is the second letter, October eighth, twenty twenty, from Mr. Barker. Variance appeal number twenty fifty-one. Here's zoning board of appeals members, please be advised that I am agreeing to rental property owner immediately adjacent to the above cited property as well as my house located within five hundred feet of the subject property. My position is the use variance should be denied since it fails to meet any of the four auto rules set forth in New York State Board of Appeals ordinance. Moreover, the variance would forever conflict with the area R2 zoning. There is no unnecessary hardship by the applicant and other failures stated below. Rule one, reasonable return. The applicant has not submitted documentation to prove that he cannot realize a reasonable return from each of the uses permitted as found on Schedule A for the R2 use regulations. There are six permitted uses and eighteen special permit reviews listed. Beyond the current and successful onsite AAP painting business, several of these are appropriate and not requiring a variance. Applicant has not shown quotation that the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return if used only for the purpose allowed in that zone. Applicant has not submitted the requested proof of actual dollars and cents, or requested proof of actual dollars and cents proof, see Everhart versus Johnston. Furthermore, my understanding is the current variance business is providing a comfortable lifestyle for the applicant. Rule two, unique circumstances. The cited property has no unique circumstances and is not general neighborhood conditions. The property of the subject parcels are not confined to the applicant's property alone. They are all flat and wooded, see Ailey or Avenue Bailey Construction Company versus Thatcher. There is no singular disadvantage, see Hicks versus Griffin. The uniqueness relates to the hardship that relates to the land and not the personal circumstances of the owner. Rule three, essential character of the neighborhood. The variance that runs with the property now has and will forever alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The applicant's aggressive growth desires are not light commercial and violate zoning plans and rights of the owners of other properties in the area. Court has held that the variances should I'm gonna read that again. Court has held that quotation, "The variances should be denied since the project would set a pattern for future development that would in time alter the characters, the neighborhood's, character. There is an abundant amount of suitable commercial land and opportunities elsewhere for the applicant." Rule four, self-created hardship. The applicant has created this hardship by purchasing a property that is owned R2 and requires a variance to operate. The applicant was fully aware of these conditions and restrictions. The town and the area property owners should not have to guarantee the investment careless land buyers. See Carriage Workhouse Enterprises LTD versus Siegel. The applicant has exceeded the threshold of light commercial, which was used in previous variances granted. As held by the court appeals and Clark decision, no administrative body may destroy the general scheme of zoning laws by granting variances indiscriminately. The twelve-acre Sacks Family rental property immediately adjacent to the east of the applicant property is now devalued and harmed for parts of possible future residential use. There is an unsightly outside storage of equipment and trailers, machine noises, vocal employees, and vehicle traffic. The variance that runs with this property should be rescinded due to the misrepresentation in ZBDA findings. In the Chris Booth Appeal number thirteen eighty-nine, held in July fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, and renewed two later applications, applicants stated that the property was never put for sale as residential use and it was in a no-fly zone and adjacent to the railroad tracks to attract people. This is an opinion not supported by any facts or research with ten years of the United States Air Force pilot experience and thirty years of major airline pilot experience. This is a false and invalid claim. There's no such thing as a no-fly zone here. In nineteen sixty-nine through nineteen eighty-three, the government acquired private lands for for a ground security buffer around the Plattsburgh Air Force Base. See Airport Survey Map dated nine fourteen, two thousand and five. There is an approach in a departure area for aircraft operations that concern heights of structures. This area is west of the railroad tracks and would apply to both residential and commercial structures. On October second, twenty twenty, I had a conversation with a very experienced realtor. He indicated that the residential zone properties on the eastern South Junction would not preclude from housing bills due to the railroad and airport operations. This is supported by fact. Derek Myrdan has built a house diagonal to the railroad and airport operations. This is supported by fact from supporting South Junction Road and is very happy with the location. Additionally, further south is Valcor Heights with a large expensive homes right near the state railroad tracks in the middle of the process. Since the building is residential in nature, the variance should be revoked, rescinded due to the above, converted into a single-family home allowing applicant to purchase a more suitable commercial property. Sincerely, Jeffrey B. Baker.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all of them. Back to you, please.
As stated in several of the comments that were made, cannot realize a reasonable return on the investment. The business is self-proclaimed there, correct?
Business is, I mean, it's important.
And have we looked at some of the uses that would be allowed there?
Right, some of the uses, I mean, obviously are residential uses. Those are allowed uses. There are some special permitted uses that are allowed and has done as well. But predominantly, you know, residential uses are the allowed uses. And I understand there's been some discussion for some of these letters or some mention some of these letters about how some of these properties could be used residentially and quite honestly, with the Clinton County Airport being located adjacent to this property right north of it, as well as just north of the Booth property, I think there is some significant problems with locating residences in that area. I know there's a proof for that. But I think in a lot of cases, I think people would be hesitant perhaps to construct residences in that area with the amount of flights going over that area, the noise that would be involved in that, and just, you know, with
I mean, there's railroad tracks right there also.
And there are railroad tracks right there as well.
We realize all that, but
Right, I mean
I mean I mean, you put up a two-family dwelling in a location.
You could, but again, you know, with the noise
I mean, right where the storage units are going.
I don't know, technically, you'd do mixed use on that property and I don't know if that would be if that would
R2 would not cause, you know, neither variance or anything.
I don't know if you would or not, if the variance would be there.
Yes, you could put a two-family dwelling. You just have to have the separation, the distance between the two structures.
Possibly be, I guess that would be possible, but certainly that's not what we're looking to do because I think we understand the same complications that would exist with that. You know, you have the airport, you have the train tracks, you have you know, you have other commercial operations in that area. I understand, Mr. Barker, only to the east of this property and it's heavily wooded, but we just don't think the property really accommodates any type of residential use right there with those complications that exist. The proposed use, the two initial buildings are going to be ten units each. They are going to be heavily screened from the neighbor and despite Mr. Barker saying in one letter, at least according to RMS's survey map, it looks like the paved surface is well over twenty feet from his property line. And from the Booth side, it looks like even the existing building is over a hundred feet from the Booth line and even the proposed building is, I can't read the number, but it looks like it's like ninety feet or maybe it's eighty feet from ninety-four feet, it looks like, from the Booth property line. So it's not really not really any kind of close proximity to the Booth property whatsoever. And again, that area is all wooded and even on the Barker side, it's wooded not only on match property, but it's heavily wooded on the Barker property. So, I mean, I can realize that. I don't really know what Mr. Barker's plan is for his property. He mentions some trails and timbering it, but if he wants to timber and open it up, that's on him.
Right.
He could certainly do that on his own property. But if he opens it up and then complains about the fact that, well, I can see this now, well, how is that Mr. Murphy's fault?
No, no.
Mr. Murphy has also agreed to do whatever screening is necessary from the road. I mean, if the board feels it's necessary, it puts some kind of fencing like in front of these units, even though as existing, I think they're going to be somewhat hard to see from the road as well anyway because there is some woods in the front. If he would agree able to put some kind of screening so it wouldn't be visible from the road, he'd also agree to be some type of hours of operation. It's not really his intent to just be like a twenty-four-seven type operation. He doesn't want to have to deal with any issues that come up with that as well. As far as lighting, any type of lighting on this property is all going to be motion detected. So I'm not saying like at five, six, seven o'clock at night that, you know, especially this kind of year, somebody might be there, that some kind of downward pass lighting might come on. But it's not going to be illuminated like twenty-four-seven with street lights or anything like that. It's going to be motion detection lighting. So it's really not going to be something that's going to be a nuisance or some type of issue to any of the neighbors. He's going to continue to maintain the buffers that exist as well as the woods. You know, and keep it essentially the same condition as it is right now. As noted, even I know apparently there's been some complaints about from some of the neighbors about maybe what condition the property is. It certainly looks like it's a pretty well-conditioned from the pictures and just noting from Mr. Younghoff commented on this evening, that the property is pretty well-kept up. Again, I'm not suggesting that Matt may not have a trailer from the back of the building on the pavement at some point and the pavement probably had a lift back there or whatever, but that's just his operations. It's not like he's storing materials outside or anything. That's not happening.
Court members, have any more questions?
No.
Public hearing portion of the meeting is now open. Anybody that would like to speak to this matter can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and state your point of view.
Well, you thought you were done with Booths, but you're not. So, I'm Lori Booth Trudeau. My address is actually in Plattsburgh at twenty-one Morrison Avenue. But I am one of the joint property owners to the west of this property. You heard an awful lot of stuff from my siblings, so I'm not going to repeat all that. I have two or three points I would like to make. Can you hear me through the mask?
Yes, ma'am.
When you buy a piece of property that has a variance attached that already alters the use of it from what its particular zone space was, you know that you are carrying that forward when you make the decision to buy the property. That is not a surprise when your life changes or your business plans change. You have to adapt without necessarily having an impact on the whole neighborhood that's around you. In our case, we have a piece of wooded property which has belonged to our family forever. At the moment, it's wooded. We all just inherited it, so there are now four of us that own it, so the likelihood at some point is good that we may need to sell this piece of property because we can't go on in perpetuity passing it down to, you know, fifteen people. So, from our perspective, this is in fact potentially a residential building site. Just because some people don't want to live next to a railroad track that has, you know, a very few number of trains going by in a day, doesn't mean that that bothers a very few number of trains going by in a day, doesn't mean that that bothers most people. Like my sister said, she lives near one. I've lived near one, you don't even hear it after you move in. So, to presume that this is not saleable potentially as, as our piece of property at least, as a piece of residential property, I think is entirely dependent upon an individual's perspective. I'd like to point out two things. One is that I was at the planning board last month when this project was discussed. The question was asked specifically whether or not this self-serve storage unit was going to have twenty-four hour access or if it was going to be limited access, because you're looking at another similar one in the town of Plattsburgh that was discussed before this, which will have, um, limited access. It will be locked up after a certain time. The person representing this project said this would not be gated or limited, that it would be twenty-four hour access with the presumption that people using the storage units could come and go. So this now becomes transient activity. Whether we think that's going to happen, whether you think that's going to have an impact or not on the neighborhood, I think it entirely depends on who comes to those storage units and who, and what they're using it for. And this is planned to have additional storage units added. So, what looks like a very benign, oh, it's only, you know, ten storage units on either side, becomes I don't know how many in the second phase, but we've already got that planned. So, this is not necessarily something that's just low impact, no traffic. If you've ever been around storage units, you know that there's, people often come and go if they have the opportunity to at all hours. That wouldn't be what I'd want to live next to. It was also said at the planning board, and I've heard it again tonight in sort of an offhanded way, well, there's already boat storage down the road, not very far away. Well, I would point out that that belongs to the town of Peru, and that is in a district which is, which is zoned late commercial, and is in a, is in a resident, a neighborhood that has much more commercial use mixed in with residential use. South Junction Road is, is zoned by the town of Plattsburgh as R2, and the only places in the town of Plattsburgh in your own schedule, our own schedule, for storage units are high-density, high-impact areas, including the Zone C Shopping Center Commercial and Zone SC, which is the Service Center District. Both of these are the places that, that you specifically list that you think is appropriate for a storage unit, and even here, the site plan requires review, it's not an automatic choice. And in the language of the town of Plattsburgh zoning code, it says, in these areas, these are the most intensive commercial districts in the town of Plattsburgh, and that is where the town of Plattsburgh chose to locate appropriate use for service, for self-serve storage. I'd just like you to think about that. This becomes, it feels like what's happened to this piece of property is spot zoning. It's located in an R2 district, there's a point to that. As a town, the town made decisions about how they wanted the land use used, and now you've heard from a lot of neighbors who are all saying, hey, you keep moving the bar on this piece of property. I'd ask you to give that serious thought. As a town, the town has already decided where these kinds of things should be done and where they shouldn't. This is one of the ones that you didn't include it in. So, thank you for listening to the fact that there are neighbors to this property.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this matter? Eric?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey B. Barker. I'm the author of two of those letters. I'd like to just address the attorney's, uh, comments about noise. There already is a lot of noise on that property. We're talking, uh, employees cursing, yelling, talking, communicating, uh, backup beeps of the machinery, the trucks that come in to handle all the trailers that are there. By the way, that photograph is very dated. That old last painting sign blew down about a year ago, so it's not a accurate portrayal of today. That's commercial property.
Which photograph are you referring to?
Uh, there was a photograph up there from the road looking at...
That was taken this morning.
That right there?
You know what? I'm sorry.
I took that this morning.
I see that. I thought that white door was the sign. Very good. Stand corrected. Okay, no boat, there is no boat storage on South Junction Road commercially. There's one sailboat owned or at the Goodrich property owned by the family that has that property. The commercial, stated commercial boat storage on South Junction is at least two-hundred-and-fifty yards south on Route Nine in the town of Peru, as pointed out by the, the previous speaker. The building was built as commercial, actually was built to possibly convert back to a house, and it could be done. In fact, if the variance is denied, which we are all hoping it will be, I'll be happy to buy, purchase the wooded lot on the north end of his lot and just streamline that variance. It's going to be maintained as a building. That'd protect my property and my other neighbors' properties. I don't mind doing that. That one letter I sent October eighth, I did a lot of legal research. As you know, I'm a retired airline captain, I, uh, with Delta, I got thirty years flying airliners and complying with laws, rules, and regulations. Ten years of Air Force, I flew one-elevs and tankers out of here. There is no, no-fly zone here. This is the airport survey map that discussed. The properties were annexed for a security buffer around the airport. There's a fly approaching departure zone that lies west of the railroad tracks. All these properties here on the east end of the railroad tracks are all prime residential property. I spoke to a very experienced realtor in the area. He said you could easily put houses right up to the railroad tracks, in other words, with the proper setbacks. He said, look at Valcor Heights south of there. They're right next to the road and the railroad signal where they hit the horns, and they're upscale houses. That's, uh, is it a misnomer or a misstatement or bad assumption? And the no-fly zone is, is pretty, uh, we've got to put an end to it right now. It does not exist, it never did exist, exist there. There may or may not have been nuclear weapons there, I will not make a comment, but there is a ground security team to protect whatever's on that airport, airbase. There's a finding of the Board of Appeals in the previous, that that property, subject property is unique because it's adjacent to the flight line. Well, if you take a rule or one inch for whatever foot, it's over six thousand feet, that's an audible mile, that's over a statute mile away. If you go to Black's Law Dictionary, it does not meet the, the term of adjacent at all. Unique, the case law unique applies to the property itself. That piece of property with that variance, Mr. Chris Booth in nineteen ninety-eight, is just like the other parcels, flat, wooded, it never should have been, uh, variance never should have been granted. I didn't know enough to look into it at the time, I was busy with my job, but I looked now, and I printed out the variance rules for the United States, which I hope you all are very familiar with it. I highlighted it in my October eighth letter to you, and if not, you can defer decision tonight and digest it. I would be happy to give you this all review. This variance with an unbiased decision board has not a snowball's chance in a hot zone to get passed if we're all on the same side of, of rules and laws and compliance. There was never any mention by Mr. Murphy or his attorney of all the variances R2 permits. There's lots of opportunities for him to make more money, okay? We don't have to have a, a commercial zone pushed down our throats here. I'm in the, uh, history, and I like nature, and it's a tough one. I have walking trails back there. There's good hunting back there, there's good hiking. The people that rent my property have a son, he's in the forestry, he wants to take care of a lot of managed woods there. We don't want to be, and it's thin back there, it's not heavily wooded. There is no buffer visually from what is proposed here on an R2 property. Sacks Family, uh, Sacks Family Farm, the, uh, Gillerlin Farm up the road there, the booth property, there's so much history there. Just the other day, I was doing some digging, I found an old broken-up clay pot in the middle of the woods, twelve inches down. How did that get there? But now we have a commercial operation. Let me point out also, in my earlier letter, uh, dated July thirteenth, item number six, there was a sentence that was dropped out when it was read. I quote my own writing. "My understanding is that Mr. Murphy bought out his part, business partner, and is now saddled with debt. The variance is being utilized to pay off this debt, all to the detriment of the property owners and residents." Whoever read it would like to see my original, I'd be glad to show it to you. Okay, an honest submission, but it's an admission of fact, it's very pertinent of the decision you gentlemen have to make tonight. I'll make sure I have everything covered here. Oh, I was walking on that property that I rent with my friend and neighbor. Uh, September twenty-third, I came upon a paintbrush that was, the pictures were taken and emailed to the zoning people. It's not a violation, but it's what I, it was thirty-four feet, I believe, over my surveyed property line onto my property, and it was a wet paint, paintbrush. And, uh, that was a signal to me from Mr. Murphy and/or his employees of what to expect because he had wind that a lot of us were not in favor of what he wants to do to the residential property. If you'd like me to give this to you gentlemen to review, anyway, it's on record with the town of, uh, Plattsburgh zoning. Just want to make sure I got everything covered here. Adjacent to the flight line, six thousand feet is not, so phase one, two, ten units, that's twenty, and then phase two later on, another twenty units. Where's it going to stop? You gentlemen have the power to preserve the southeast corner with a comprehensive plan of the town of Plattsburgh in mind, saying, hey, he can go buy commercial property, he can sell a part of that wisdom, Mr. Barker, perhaps a booth, convert that to a, uh, back to a house, or have somebody that can live in it and have a little shop, a quiet gentle shop, where we don't have to hear all this, this greedy selfish employee traffic that does not belong there, believe me. So anyway, you're in control. The future of the town's direction in this area is up to your vote, but I just have to remind you, the rules and laws, there's not a snowball's chance in a hot room for this to pass. I think I've covered my points. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anybody else here like to make any comments? Come right up.
Um, I just got a letter here...
Your name, ma'am?
Yes.
Your name?
Oh, yes, my name is Kathy Giroux. Um, I have a letter here from Derek Myrdan that he gave me today that he would let me to read, I guess maybe we emailed it in, but maybe it didn't get some here implied.
Yeah?
Yeah. It's a short letter, it's not as long as any of the others. It says, greetings. As owner of property adjacent to forty South Junction Road, I write to strongly object to any interpretation by the town zoning board of appeals, which would permit residential zoning to be set aside to allow business zoning to replace it. I built my forever home at nineteen South Junction Road thirteen years ago, and was a renter of a small cottage on the Davis property for ten years prior to that, because I liked the country feel of South Junction Road and the surrounding untouched wilderness. I walked the broad meadows, birdwatch in the forest, enjoy the passage of small groups of deer, eat in the occasional moose, and fly fish secret spots along the San River. I can do this and have for over twenty-three years because the residential zoning set by the town of Plattsburgh protects the area from the kinds of development that would crush the many wildernesses that surround me and my neighbors. But I am not ignorant. I know that eventually the South Junction Road corridor will be discovered by others looking to build their forever homes in a quiet natural setting, just minutes from the noisy but necessary offerings of Route Three, et cetera. All the more reason to keep the residential zoning restrictions and mandates for as much of South Junction Road as possible. Once the residential zoning is twisted even slightly, its weight in truth and objectivity will begin to slide down that slippery slope to a fate that is all but impossible to recover from. So, please do the right thing, not just for one person who does not even live on South Junction Road, but for those of us who do and who followed all the rules and restrictions the town insisted upon before we could make South Junction Road and its unique surroundings our forever homes. Respectfully, Derek Myrdan, nineteen South Junction Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here's a copy of his letter.
Anybody else that would like to speak to this matter? State your name.
Christopher James. I live at four South Junction Road. I rent four and eight South Junction Road. I've been there since two thousand eighteen, uh, never had any interaction whatsoever with Mr. Murphy, and my concern isn't with Mr. Murphy, it's the fact of what's opening up. So, the trails, we have twelve acres of land that we use. We have a side-by-side, we walk them, we've cleared for some maple trees that my son is going to tap, and the concern isn't about Mr. Murphy. The concern is the fact of the storage units themselves and the access that they provide from someone else. And in the future, not pretending to know what Mr. Murphy's plans are, if someone else owns that and they expand upon that, there's more units that are within there. Going in, you have to make sure that the land is surveyed properly, groundwater is done so that there isn't a runoff to the adjacent San River. I don't have as much invested as some of the other individuals that have written letters and have spoken tonight, but I would like you to consider the fact of what happens when you proceed with something like this and the ramifications for that type of property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I ask the question one more time. Anybody else like to speak to this matter? I did not see any hands go up. I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move to my board members. No questions?
I don't have any questions.
I guess my, to go over the used variance, the first item is cannot realize a reasonable return substantiated by competent financial evidence. The business is there and surviving.
The business is there and surviving, um, but essentially, again, um, whether or not we can realize a reasonable return is a different issue than whether or not we can realize a reasonable return for any uses allowed in that zone. Again, we talked about whether or not residences on that side of the road, uh, on South Junction Road would be suitable, acceptable. Do you think there's issues with that? Do you think that the, the... And again, I know we've heard some discussion about no-fly zone, I've never raised the no-fly zone type thing, but I think just the proximity to the airport, the proximity to the railroad tracks do create issues regarding the saleability of that property as any type of residential property.
That is a good point, and yet we've had five, six, seven different people that actually say, I mean, they like the area, want to stay there.
Understandable. A number of the people who have commented tonight or spoken tonight do not live in the area. Mr. James does, a letter from Mr. Myrdan, certainly he does, um, no issues with that. The other, while the other people who've spoken or submitted letters do not live in the area.
No, I realize that.
They live outside the area. They certainly have, they certainly have a, um, financial interest in the property and their use of the property, and we certainly understand that, and they have a point, and so, but they also don't, they don't reside in the area.
I do, within five hundred feet, I got the letter.
That's, that's fair, we realize.
It just, yeah, one of those, I mean, one that mentioned, Mr. Barker said about wanting to purchase some of, of, um, Mr. Murphy property. I mean, the property was for sale for, had been said for sale a couple of times before Murphy, Mr. Murphy bought it. Mr. Barker wanted to buy it before, he certainly had the option to buy it before and do whatever he wanted to do with it. Whatever reason, he chose not to do that, but that's the side of the... to do with it. Whatever reason, he chose not to do that, but that's decided.
I'm going to ask, Sheriff, do you have any feeling about the financial evidence?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you go through that, you want to go through your seeker, which is required before you take a sit.
You have an attorney that can do that for you.
Yeah.
I thought it'd take me a long while to get this to launch. All right, ready?
We're ready.
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No more small impact or moderate to large impact?
Large?
Moderate.
Moderate to large, I guess.
Will the proposed act result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No more small or moderate to large?
It's a large again, huh?
I don't know if it's that much or not.
You going large?
Well, moderate to large is the second one again, and that's going to be where the problem is.
Moderate to large, is that a consensus?
Yeah.
Free to one, yes.
Will the proposed action interfere the character or quality of the existing community? No more small impact or moderate to large impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
There is any there.
We don't have any critical environmental areas.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walking?
It'll be large, I don't know.
I would go for a small, I suppose.
Yeah, I would say small.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and a fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Shouldn't imply.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Same question about public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
None there.
Will the proposed action interfere the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
As I understand it, I don't think there should be much there. No, small.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and water?
Small.
It'd be small.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems?
Say it, it should be small.
Small.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
It's small.
Okay, so because there were three in part two that were moderate to large, we need to go on to part three. So for every question in part two that was answered, moderate to large impact may occur, or if there is a need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact, please complete part three. Part three should in sufficient detail identify the impact, including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce those impacts. Part three should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. Each potential impact should be assessed considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short-term, long-term, and cumulative impacts. I only have to walk through them, but you don't want to read by writing after this. So will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? So for that, we need to explain why you... basically, why you made that determination. What about the proposed project? We do... we... there will be a moderate to large material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
Well, as I understand it, I mean, my understanding of it is it's zoning residential and talking industrial, I guess.
Commercial use.
Why do you think that will be significant?
Being it and our two district to start with makes it a matter of concern, the amount of traffic, the amount of people entering, possible extra hours of usage that might be occurring there.
Okay. And were there any elements from the project to avoid or reduce those specific
Can you restate that, please?
Were there any design elements or measures from the project that were designed to reduce the impacts that you just-
No, there was none.
So, when you said, you know, the traffic and that kind of stuff, that's... when you... in the second part, that's when you could say, or he could say, you know, I could put up fencing, I could make it, you know, only hours of operation from here to here in order to mitigate your concerns. That's what that question's asking. Did he mention that?
Yeah, and they did say... they did say motion detector lights, and they did mention-
Reduced hours, that kind of stuff.
Correct. And they have reduced hours, and he's going to have to put up fencing, some electronic gates, and everything else to actually maintain that.
That's correct. So that's so... just if I did hear it correctly, you mentioned fencing, motion detector lighting. Did you say barriers or no?
You talk about additional fencing in the front, so there's a screen, the units from the road. So you... I don't know if you'll see them anyways, because there is some foliage there, but we're talking about putting additional fencing. And if we're going to monitor the hours of there, we have to put some kind of gate or something obviously as well. And we're certainly willing to monitor it to, you know, adjust the hours of operation. And yeah, in all lighting, it's going to be motion detector downward cast, so it's not going to like shine on cars, it's not going to interfere with any of the neighbors' properties.
The second one, will the proposed act result in a change in the use or intensity of the land, and what about the project makes you think that it will?
Well, you're going to have twenty units to start with, that we're not going to be
I was going to ask you if you want to correct that and say initially, there's only twenty units. The actual proposal would be forty units.
Right. And that's just the beginning of the statement, just saying that there is going to be ten units on each side, right? So twenty units total.
Twenty units total.
And the possibility of twenty, twenty more?
We discussed it. It's... I mean, it shows the potential for future impact. I mean, it's not initially scheduled to be controlled.
Right. No, otherwise, I'm just saying, there's a possibility of adding sixty more, forty more units.
Right. I mean, if the board wanted to condition out of this, having from that in front of the board at that point in time, at a later time, we're going to do that.
Did the project offer anything to reduce that impact?
No.
I would suggest that the fact that we can... we're willing to accept the condition that we wanted to further develop any of the rear units.
I'm just looking at the twenty units to start with, basically.
So the third one is, will the proposed action interfere the character or quality of the existing community? What about the project makes you think there will be a large
I think right now, it's a single... it's a single building sitting there, and its usage is, I would consider to be minimal, seeing that most of its business is actually not on that site. And with this being in effect, there won't be that much more traffic and more commercial-looking buildings there as compared to the basic neighborhood of Chad's houses and that type of structure.
Even though we way had a discussion about this, but Mr. Murphy mentioned to me, the units are going to be stick-built, so they're not going to be... and they're going to be siding, like with residential siding.
Single roofs.
Single roofs, so it's not going to be-
Your metal.
Your metal box-type storage. It's going to look more residential, at least in nature, than it would be a lot of the other type of storage that you see.
So what did the project do or offer to lessen that concern?
He just said that it would be more-
Certainly carry more residential-
More residential to be here and traditional.
And again, they're going to be... they are going to be screened type of, not only the existing woods, center, and whatever, fencing for other type of screening, you know, whether to control or anything. They have to be willing to do whatever.
So that wraps up the seeker part of it. We're good to go on the seeker, so now we have to vote on the seeker?
Yes.
So we would have to declare a negative declaration to the seeker?
Yes, correct.
And we would need a motion for that?
Some would.
Second, any second. And show hands on that. And roll call vote.
Henry Hale?
Yes.
Chairman Rebaugh?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Paul D. Moore?
Yes. And now it now goes into motion?
No.
If anybody has one.
If... if before I... before you vote, I mean, I haven't really heard from Mr. Black or Mr. Dooham about any concerns they may have about the project. I know Mr. Rebaugh mentioned, and so did Mr. Hale. And it sounds like the major concern, it sounds like it's essentially the financial hardship component of the application. So if the board would agree, now they reach this point, I would be willing, and after talking to Mr. Murphy, be willing to ask the board table this application for us to produce additional financial hardship information.
Are you just going to go for the one, or do we need to go through two, three, and four? Because that's only... you haven't even got through number one.
I think that's what he asked.
Well, I'm asking the board to table the application based on... I mean, certainly, I'm willing to listen to the other comments from the board members, if they have other concerns that they would like us to address, but I understand the financial hardship would seem to be the one Mr. Hale and Mr. Rebaugh mentioned.
Well, it's definitely the biggest one, where if we can't make it pass number one, then it's definitely a problem. And, I mean, there are definite uses that could be put there. That actually would, yeah, would be more upfront money to put in a multiple-dwelling building there, but there's actually more return on that than running out of storage units too. And we would have to look at that aspect.
So, again, we would be willing to make a motion, or at least request that the board entertain a motion to table the application for us to produce additional financial hardship information.
Anybody on the board want to go along with that?
John E.
You gentlemen down there?
No, I just-
Is that what the board wants to look at that aspect right now?
Suit the board with deny our request to table the application.
That's what the feeling is, I get. I have to go to our attorney.
We still need your decision. The other thing too is there's other factors to consider, so if there are other factors that would cause you to advise, you could discuss those too. But just because they can't get back to the first one, if they can... if the project can get you information to satisfy the first one, there may be other factors that are concerned also. I'm just saying to avoid having to come back. If that's the case, we want to discuss that now also. You shouldn't have any ability to do that if you want to.
Well, let's look at them a little bit. The alleged hardship is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. It is one property among many properties there, so it probably doesn't tilt the scale on that one. The request appearance on that alter essential character of the neighborhood. And I guess I get hung up on that one a little bit too, because even though there's stick built and more residential and lots, it does seem to me that it does tend to alter the character of the neighborhood. I don't know if you agree with me on that, Sheriff.
Well, my problem with it is that there are other uses that could be done. The fact that the public outcry has been such, I don't really think that tabling it will suffice what we want to do. I mean, like I say, there are other things that could be done with that property.
But I think if we produce certain other documentation, which we've taken on in the past in certain applications where required... requested use variances to show and demonstrate that why other uses could not... could perhaps not be financially capable for a particular property. I've done this a number of times with this board, to show why there is a financial hardship with respect to the requirement that town has and the state has.
Well, I think as a courtesy, we can table a thing, but again, I feel that, you know, there are other uses that could be employed here, but if tabling is something that Mr. Renee wants, I don't have a problem with it.
And again, we'd have to go through each of the uses and explain to you why we feel it would not be acceptable, or not be easy.
Right. Okay.
I think a site plan and actually showing what one build there would be beneficial would be go back to.
There is like a site plan right here.
I saw that.
But you're talking about like a-
Unlike it.
Detail.
You mean what it looks like?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe I'd go for some of that.
Because putting storage units in that area is something I'm not... yeah. My basic opinion is, I think number one is just... is just not good.
Well, you only have one now, only one member saying that they would entertain.
Well, I think Bill is going to do something.
I really think we should at least the board then have the courtesy of submitting further information.
All right, so we make that motion?
I'll make the motion that this variance be tabled.
Show hands on that. Or should I ask for a second first, I guess?
Second.
Second, show hands on that. And roll call vote.
Henry Hale?
Yeah, no.
Chairman Rebaugh?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Patrick Dean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
It's Betsy.
Hello, Betsy. This is Steve in the town of Plattsburgh at the zoning board of appeals. I got you on speakerphone.
Yeah.
Very good. Sorry if you're not feeling well.
I'm feeling... I'm feeling fine. I'm four inches older, but I'm not COVID-19, so there's that.
Okay.
Perfect. Betsy, what I'm going to do is, we're going to introduce the project. Alan and myself will go over it, the details, and then when the board has questions, we got a mic up to the portable phone that we have here, and then you can answer the questions that they may have for you, okay?
Where is it?
All right.
It's in that guy's.
Thank you. So it's appeal twenty-one fifty-three, two sixty-nine Cumberland Head Road. This was a variance that was, correct if I'm wrong, Alan tabled from how many months ago?
Last year.
That was... okay, more than a year ago, sorry. The area variances are requested allowed to construct a twenty-four by twenty-six attached garage in the rear, which does not meet the twenty-fifty side yard setbacks in an R four district, approaching one foot on the one side and thirteen on the other, only leaving nineteen feet on one side and seventeen on the other. Alan can go over the details that was submitted to our office from Betsy or Elizabeth.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, may remember, this is this lot right here. This is the connector road. This is-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you may remember, this is this lot right here. This is the connector road. This is Cumberland Head Road. This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure on that lot. So this is an R four district, which is a one acre minimum, and these are not one acres. So this is the lot. This is the way it used to look. Used to be a garage here. This garage was torn down. A new septic system was put in the backyard here. The previous submission had a new garage being built in this area here, connecting to the house. Concerns last time I was here was getting access actually to the backyard. So here's what it looks like today. This picture was taken this morning. As you guys can tell, it was wet out. It went raining this morning. Just wanna point that out. Kinda hard to see. The lines are real light, but this is her existing house right here. This is the new proposed garage right here. Her leach field, this is what her leach field is, and these are her, uh, septic tanks back here in the back. It's a little bit better there, just like traced it out, so you can see it. So this square right here, there's that septic tank, there's that septic tank, this is the leach field here. The driveway still comes in here, and she would have to make a left, sharp left-hand turn into this garage. Okay, Betsy, anything you wanna add? You got the same slides?
Um, I don't think I have anything to add unless anybody has any questions.
All right, so the house is pre-existing, non-conforming, just from the basis of it's so close to the one side yard. And you're looking for nineteen foot variance on one side and seventeen foot variance on the other side. And to fill the end, trying to figure out how much she is actually lacking in that.
Well, she would need twenty on one and thirty on the other. That's why on the nineteen side she needs one.
Yes.
On the other side she needs thirteen.
Eleven and thirteen.
Which is a reduction from, last time she needed three different variances.
Right, okay. And the garage does not go past the house on one side anyways. It's actually better than the house set. The other, one question I have for you, did Mr. Mosher run a program for actually turning a vehicle into that garage?
So, I, uh, Mr. Mosher did not, but what I did do is that I laid out these dimensions in my parking lot at work. And we brought our vehicles and actually did, we did our own test to see if we could actually pull it into, uh, into the garage with the seventeen foot. So we, we constructed it like specifically as opposed to whatever kind of an engineering plant there could be. So we can make the swing both in and out, um, into the garage, seventeen feet on the, on the side.
We have small cars?
I know, just have a Honda Pilot, so, I mean, that's a pretty big car.
I just would have concerns on that, that's all.
Yep, yeah, hey, we had the same concerns. I, I completely, uh, I completely hear you on the concerns on that. And, uh, and so we, uh, I can only tell you that we did, we did exercise ourselves and, uh, and were comfortable that we, that it would work.
And you do have access to your septic system now also?
Absolutely, absolutely. You can go right through. I mean, that seventeen feet will push you right into the backyard. And all, I mean, I'll have a fence up there, but it'll all be open into it. And, uh, won't entheat either of the tanks or the system. Everything, there's, uh, there's access, um, access for it to the septic system. Um, as well as there's a, there's a, a power, um, like a power post coming up, so, you know, we worked to stake it out so that it wouldn't entheat any, uh, anything there and have access to it. We'll use the same builder that installed the, uh, septic system, so they, uh, they did it, they'll know it.
Board members have any questions that they would like to have asked or answered?
No.
Betsy, do you have any intentions of using this for residential use at any time?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know that, can you say the question again?
Do you have any intentions of using this for residential use as far, as far as turning it into a single family, uh, a secondary single family or only for a garage?
Oh my gosh, this is a garage. It's enough to be able to, be able to store my stuff and park my car. That'd be nice. I might, you know, we, we talked about putting a, an extra storage area on this house, but not, not like an apartment or anything.
No apartments, no living space?
Nope, nope.
I will open the public hearing portion of the meeting up right now. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? I did not see anybody rea, okay. Please go up. Say your name.
My name is Wendy Ordway. And I used to own the house, Betsy's house. And I'm a summer resident in the back. I have a cottage in the back, and I just got to notice about it. I didn't think I'd be here, but I am. So I just wanted to be clear about, when I read, what I got was that the variances are on the sides. It wouldn't affect the back property.